September 9th, City Council meeting to order. Start with our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which holds its stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes to approve from our August 26, 2019, City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion made by Kyle and seconded by Lynn. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Additions to the agenda. I want to add underneath set preliminary levy, public hearing. I also want to set a public hearing for, council public hearing for budget review.
Could be a workshop on a public hearing?
Yeah, workshop.
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 You said public hearing?
No.
Workshop.
Workshop, yes. Set preliminary levy, we'll put it right underneath that.
Okay.
Under the 6:30 thing. And workshop. Anything else we need to add? Under the resignation for deputy clerk, you should add post position. Block the debate.
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda with the two additions.
Motion made by Lynn to approve the agenda with the two additions, seconded by Kyle. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're going to move building permits down. Planning and zoning board is still reading, so we'll give them until, as long as we can. We'll put them up when they get here. So that takes us into set preliminary levy, public hearing, September 23, 2019, at 6:30. We have to have our levy in by September 30. And so in order to have that in, we have to have a public hearing. And we're looking at September 23, at 6:30, prior to our next council meeting. So I would entertain a motion for that.
How about the motion?
Motion made by Lynn to set the preliminary levy, public hearing, for September 23 at 6:30 PM. Seconded by Jackie. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Workshop, we're looking at that night. We did have our, hopefully, our finance committee, our final finance meeting. We've gone through the budget and some pay increases. We'd like to present that to the full council. We'd like to do that on September 23 also, at 5:30 that evening. We will have the packets ready. I say we, I mean Bob, will be able to send the full packet out tomorrow or the next day. So everybody will have two weeks to review it, prior to going through.
And if there's questions, we should reach out to one of the three or all three?
One or three, one or all three, yeah. Or start with Bob and we can go from there, yeah. So hopefully we can finalize that.
Just doesn't give a lot of time for discussion an hour before we are setting it.
Do you feel like, should we go at five o'clock, set at 5:30? That was my question.
I think maybe, just because none of us, I mean, yes, we'll have a chance to look at it. It doesn't give us a lot of chance for discussion.
Yeah.
Five o'clock municipal, everybody? Then we have an hour and a half. That's fine, I'm good with that. Sure.
And I think Donnie, in talking to him today, I think Donnie will be fine with that as well.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to set a workshop for five o'clock on September 23 at 5:00 PM, right here.
I'll make a motion to set a workshop at five o'clock on September 23.
Motion's been made by Kyle and seconded by Jackie.
I'll second.
Jackie to have a financial workshop at, for budget purposes, at five o'clock on September 23. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? SEH wetland delineation proposal. Scott, come and join us.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So I'm assuming you have this in your packet?
It's set in the packet.
That's true. So just maybe some background here, so about a year ago, we were talking about possibly doing wetland delineation on the former Heemans property. We put that on hold and there's a finite window of time where you have to do the field work. It has to be during the growing season. So we're approaching the end of the growing season, as we all roughly know. So I guess I was here to propose that question again, if you guys are thinking you want to move forward on that. Just an update on the, so I have a proposal for that. It's basically the same thing as what I had submitted last year for that property to the south. But then, as you know, we're studying some campground layouts on that property, but then also on properties to the north of the permanent city campground. And both the piece that you already own and the former gravel pit property. So also included in that proposal is to do delineation work on that gravel pit site as well. And the field work needs to be completed before the 15th of October. So that's basically why I'm here. And that kind of stuff is, as we've talked about, I think as a group, or at least at the staff level, I mean, delineations is one of the steps you're going to need to do as you propose or proceed with developing that property.
And I think the important thing there, Scott, is no matter what we do to proceed with that property, if we do develop it, we need to do this.
Right, right.
So there's not a lot of options where we would need to do it. The only question would be, that delineation is only good for...
It's five years, yeah.
Okay. So that would be the only thing we would need to either do another one if we don't...
Or freshen it up, yeah.
Or freshen it up if we don't decide to start doing something within five years.
Right.
When you say freshen it up, like the cost would be significantly less, or?
I would think so, yeah. I mean, I think it would just be going out with the former delineation and meeting with someone from the county. See if you agree, if anything significantly changed or not. Give you more time on that whole delineation. Let's assume that nothing's happened, you know, over there, but which is probably low risk on the south side. If you purchase the north one, it's probably the same.
Right. Wouldn't we even be able to do one on the gravel pit and we don't get home that?
Well, I mean, as long as you have permission from the owner to access the site, then we can do it, yeah. What I was explaining to Bob on that one, so there's a cost difference to do that, the north one, because it's a gravel pit site. Those are kind of a gray area in some of the rules and regulations as far as like water features. And basically it comes down to, we need to do more research once we do our field work with the agencies to see whose jurisdiction it is for the water and the wetlands to better help there, so. So that one, what we're, so the south one, that one's pretty straightforward. We're proposing just to do that at a fixed fee, but the north one, we're proposing hourly. Because if it goes well, it could be way less than what we were proposing in there. But if it's, we always try to hedge on the conservative side. That's why we had the higher number. But we were proposing go hourly on that one, so.
So it could be less.
Could be less, yeah. Was out here, you're going to say, sorry, I interrupted.
No, I was just going to say, to do diligence on that gravel pit property, it would be money well spent. Because we kind of have to figure out where the wetlands are and how many sites we can get on there. If we can even develop it into a profitable campground.
One of the things we've been trying to do with that, and even getting a campground layout, if we can't do with that plan what we want to do with an ideal campground, why would we purchase it? Or would we purchase it for trails or for whatever? So yes, we might spend $10,000 on probably the, not ours, but we may end up saving $100,000 rather than spend it on it.
And not purchase it.
And are not going to use it once we purchase it.
Right.
That is the buzzword that we were talking about, is the due diligence. It's part of the process. I think it's money well spent. Up to you guys. But yeah, just as an example, I mean, we've started those layouts for the campgrounds and we had a 2013 aerial that we're using in the background. And then we just got an updated one from the county that's a 2018 and they're drastically different. Just, they name all like open water, I'll call it, so. Getting boots on the ground to delineate that stuff is really needed for that stuff as well.
So can you just further expand on what you then use this for? It tells you what you can and can't do with those water areas, or what else does it do?
For both of them?
Maybe just...
Yeah, I mean, so why you want to do a delineation in the first place?
Yeah, maybe for us and the public.
Basically you want to avoid the wetlands in any kind of development, whether it's the south one or the north one. So you need to know where they are in order to avoid them, you know, if there's any that are obvious. But, and then if you can't avoid them and you impact them, then you need to have the delineation reports in order to do any permitting. Mitigation, so. It's kind of a two-step process, as far as that goes.
But if we want to move forward on anything with these lands, I'll call them, it sounds like we kind of have to take the first step to really know what we can do legally, so.
Questions, do we want to do it yet this fall? Do we have enough time yet?
Yeah.
Our goal would be to try and move on these things early next year, if we can.
That's right, that's a very optimistic goal, yes.
It might be, I mean, is there any reason to wait until the spring? Is it harder to get in during the spring? Are they scheduled out? Is there anything that we need to know or worry about?
Part of it is laying the campground out. We don't have to keep going on the campground layouts when it's...
When you have that, that makes sense.
And there's some issues on the gravel pit for some of, some of the wetlands are kind of man-made?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's the whole jurisdiction is the buzzword in the wetland delineation world, is who has jurisdiction on that, so.
And that would also tell us, your report would also tell us that.
Yeah, we're proposing basically on that second task, so the gravel pit thing, is we have a separate report just talking about basically that jurisdiction and the interactions that we're going to have with the different agencies to come to consensus on whose authority it is. Once we have that, that will create a bit of delineation report. It's easy enough to do. So yeah, we will. And then the other part of the discussion that we're going to have, and we have a little bit at the staff level, is just on, part of that due diligence process is just with gravel pits, there's reclamation requirements that are out there, both the county level, the state level, yours hasn't yet, the local level or not. Typically, the gravel pits aren't in cities, like, we have colonies.
If it's under the city control, we would have some control as to what we state. But this county and state still could overhaul.
Right, so we just want to have a little discussion.
And that's important because of whether we purchase it A, B, what price would we purchase it at? If we've got to go in and spend $100,000 to get into where we need it to be, we don't want to spend $100,000. I'm not pouring those numbers out of the air. But if we only have to spend $10,000 to get it to where we want it to be and buy it for 10, maybe it's...
At least you don't want to do it with your eyes.
With our, knowing, knowing what we got.
Well, it's easier to go to the bargaining table to say, hey.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, exactly.
We've got...
Or this is what we need to put into it, what we want and all that, yeah.
I think it's complex enough to where we hire professionals to take care of that details for time. Well, if it's something that we want to pursue...
I think it's something we should pursue sooner rather than later. My opinion on it.
Yeah, we're going to act before the five-year window, where we're not...
Between now, can I say the winter? Between now and next spring, hopefully we're doing a lot of making some decisions on some of the...
What direction you want to go?
Or at least lean toward both.
One other step that I think it was talking about a little bit is there's, depending on what you do out there, there's another step beyond, call it an environmental assessment worksheet. So if you do a campground and if you put in more than 50 camp sites, you have to do an EAW. So that's like environmental document, totally separate from wetland delineations. It's governed by the state environmental quality board. It's more red tape, but of course it's...
Yep.
It looks like you're, it looks like you're under the threshold for like golf course type development, but not on the campground. So that's just something, and you do have to list, it's basically a list of like 32 questions that you have to answer on all manner of topics. And one of them is, is wetlands too, so you have that information for that as well.
Yeah, and when, the other, the part thing is we'll start talking about running utilities out there, water sewer electric, how we can go to and then over and or around wetlands becomes important too. So I think we should move forward and do both of these and hopefully have them done by mid-winter here. Well, if you get out and get them done now before October 15, I'll outvisit you before we have the report back.
Set a few months.
I was saying 90 days and then we'll get that done. I mean, for everything, 90 days.
Okay, so by the end of the year.
We have to, I mean, it's hard to headline, we have to get the field work done by mid-October, so.
Move forward with it?
I'll make a motion to move forward on the SEH proposal to do the wetland delineation based on the fee schedule listed.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Kyle and seconded by Lynn to move forward with the SEH, this wetland delineation proposal for both the former Heemans property and the gravel pit. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Scott. Anything else?
Nope.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, thanks, Scott. Pierce Ballroom and Lanes 3.2 liquor license.
This is just a normal update?
Just a normal approval here. My only question is, wouldn't they have come through with the other ones?
Yeah, they did come through with the normal ones. They went to a different license and the state told us that they don't want or need a 3.2 license.
Okay.
But then they came back a few weeks later and said we do what they do need.
So the state has said that, okay. So we need to formally approve that. So...
I'd make that motion to go ahead with the 3.2 license for Pierce Ballroom and Lanes.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Lynn and seconded by Jackie to move forward with the grant of the 3.2 liquor license to Pierce Ballroom. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Apartment building rental. We were approached, we have the apartment building, you guys all well know. We've been approached by a commercial entity to rent out a lower unit, which is referred to as Unit 5, which is a lower unit that faces the street. They approached us, Bob did meet with them and showed them the apartment building. At that time, they indicated very strongly that they were very, very interested in it. I did talk to the entity and I talked to her last week and I talked to her again today. She has not had an opportunity to get approval from her corporate office, so they are still wanting to do it. Their hope and desire was to be here, at the meeting and have a request in. But they aren't ready for that. I did propose to them, I look back at what we were renting it for. We were renting it for $550, but then the renter was paying some of the utilities. It's my proposal that we rent it to them for gross fee and we pay for the utilities. Because if they don't pay those utilities, we get stuck with them anyway. This way we don't get stuck with them. It's water sewer and electric are the ones I'm referring to. Garbage, they would be in corporate accounts, they'd have to, a commercial account, excuse me. So they'd have to work with their own contractor on that. For internet, that would be on their own as well, that we would not be on the hook for. I had proposed to them $1,000. And if we need to go down from that, we kept now. Well, that's under the understanding that we would want to do that. That would be under the understanding that it would be a month-to-month lease because we're prepared to do something else with that building, with the fire department, as we talked. This would probably give us some income in there. I've also proposed that we're not going to do any remodeling in that building, so that they would have to do it. The only thing they asked for was carpets cleaned, and I'm not sure I have a real big problem with that. But we're if they wanted to do it either way, and I get that, I mean, that's, but we would not do any, basically remodeling or anything of that nature.
Do we have to worry about type of occupancy, seeing as though apartments are one part of it and then we're renting it out as a commercial business?
That's a question I have, had, I don't know. That's something we have to check.
We have to look into it.
What type of business was it?
It would be a, or we don't know. I do know, we a title company. So what's the general feeling, I guess? We don't have to act on this now, but I'd certainly be of, do we have, is it of the opinion of the council that we want to go ahead and move forward and rent that if we can make some money on it? Something like this would be a little bit different than bringing in a resident, because we don't have to worry about... If we bring it in a resident, we're going to have to fix things up, we're going to have to do things for them.
And there's operating hours, we're not going to have to worry about trafficking of, you know, issues.
They would be used, I mean, it would be hours a week that somebody would physically be there, not so much days, almost.
As long as it's not an issue with occupancy type.
Right.
I mean, that would be my first question, so we need to clarify that first.
I believe that area is zone commercial, residential commercial, which means it could be either. But we'll be using up such a time.
I think that it's smart to make money on a property that's sitting there. If you're going to write the contract to have it a certain way to where...
As long as they know it's month-to-month.
Yep.
And they know that.
Month-to-month. And they may, and they may want a year initially and then month-to-month after that, but I'm okay with that because we're not going to be waiting there for a year anyway, you know? And they're kind of, they're in a situation where they're looking to see if this will work. And then if it will work, they may be into the entity of purchasing something or getting something more permanent as a rental, so.
Do we need to propose a motion to...
No, I don't think so, not at this time, because we don't have an official request. I just want to get opinions from everybody who's...
I think that, yeah, go for it if we're going to zone it. As long as the zoning works out right and whatever, but I think it's smart financially to make money.
All right, moving to the next topic. We have a resignation of a city employee to work with. And the letter of resignation was in the packet. Carrie Tyson has decided to resign her position as deputy clerk. And she will be moving on. So I guess it's up for us to accept that resignation or not accept it, I guess.
Final day, day of...
September 20th. Correct. And she did, Bob, she called you last week, Wednesday, is that correct?
Yes, as far as...
Did she did call Thursday, you know, on Thursday, the middle, I think, is when she... Was it Thursday?
Thursday's when she...
But she had contacted you and called you before that, yeah. So...
I guess I'd make the motion to accept her letter of resignation.
Motion's made by Lynn to accept the resignation of Carrie Tyson, seconded by Jackie. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie didn't answer. Well, if he's going to resign, we have to find a new person, so our next step would be to post the position. And I think we should get that posted just as fast as we possibly can. Bob, do we need, have you looked at that at all yet?
I printed out the job description, I haven't had a chance to go through it yet. I guess it'd be me reading through it, Carrie's went through it.
Okay.
And she said there's nothing in there that would need to be changed.
Okay. The only issue would be salary range. Was there a range on the higher position there?
Yeah, I don't remember, I didn't write it down on the smartphone, it was on the 16 to 20 range.
I gave you guys the sheets on that at the finance meeting and I may keep a copy. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, yeah.
I don't know if that has a range on it.
Yeah.
Don't, it doesn't, but...
We have been using the David drone.
I would, yeah, we would just want to use that.
Should we use that?
Yeah, just use that.
I think that was, we were within range on that.
And then based on experience or candidates, we can...
We can adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
It was on a 16 to 20.
Okay.
And that feels reasonable.
That's obvious. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so I would entertain a motion then to post that position.
I'll make a motion to post that position.
And are we going to have it posted until position is filled with an end date?
Well, I think we want to put on there, position open until filled, which allows us to interview ahead of time if we find somebody. But when we post it, what do you think of it, any end dates? Is September 20th too soon? Do we have to go another week? We probably should go another week.
We should go another week.
We should run it twice, at least in the Morrison County record and then we close it on the Thursday after the second running.
Yeah, I think we have that as a clause. Otherwise people will just wait and then people trickle in and that's...
Right, exactly, that's why I want a...
Give them a deadline and September 20th.
So we'll post on the 15th and the 22nd, it'll close on the 26th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah. So Jackie, are you going to include that in your motion? Were you the one that made the motion?
I think I did.
Okay, Kyle, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I get you two mixed up.
Why don't you go on that one? So, yeah, let's post the position and then let's close it on the 26th, run it twice.
Motion's been made by Kyle to post the position, run it twice in the Morrison County record and put it all on our Facebook and our other entities and to close the position as of September 26.
I'll second.
Jackie, seconded by Jackie. All in favor indicated by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Interview committee.
Interview committee.
For?
This, yes. What do we have? If we have the admin committee, would be the admin committee, would be the three of us. We have two council and full council on the final, final two or three.
Yep.
We can, we can do that. And if we decide that there's two or three that, depending on how many applicants we can have, we can put that right up to the full council.
Okay. Do you think we need full council? What's the rest of the council feel?
We've typically done full council.
We've done that in the past.
But then for public works, or any of the golf course stuff. I think we did for administrator.
Yeah, we did for administrator.
Well, I think it's important for this one, because this one would step in for a city administrator if something were to happen. If you would go on vacation or you, you know, or get sick, having a privet or something, then...
I'm pretty sure it was full council and we hired Carrie, so.
I have no problem with doing full council, I could delay things up, but... So, yeah, I would say that's the admin committee and then they'll go through the applicants and then go to full council after that.
And then I think that if it's in between a council meeting, we need to kind of do a special hearing so we get somebody in helping Bob as soon as possible, in my opinion.
Bob, what do you, what do you have to be the ideas on help, do you have thoughts? Do you think we need to get somebody in?
Um, we do. Part of the problem of getting somebody in is they're kind of short, they don't spend time training. Part of the problem of getting somebody in is they're kinda short, then spend time training them too, so... I've reached Dr. Pearl to answer the door. Mary stepped up huge today, I asked her to come in and start learning the billing, so she can, we know how to take bills, but at least enter into the system.
Yeah.
Somebody doing claims, so Mary did that for almost all day today, and the rest of the week.
The, the plan we have going forward in our budget process, and we'll see that, is we're planning to bring Mary on as a full-time employee. And as part of this, we use her up in City Hall during the off-season months. And with that, we can train her on being a backup, one of her primary duties would be being a backup to the billing system. And with that, we can, now, of course, for sure, we can use her. The plan wasn't to bring her on full-time until January first, but we may have to revisit that interim period from golf course shutdown, which is potentially on November fifteenth or so, until the end of the year, and maybe, maybe keep her on during that period of time. See how that works out.
That's just a proposal to her?
Yeah. So, I mean, that, that's one method of help. Do we need to reach out to Sourcewell or anybody?
I talked to Scott, so there today, and Sourcewell doesn't have that person available. Or there is another entity in the next region down that does have a person that we can appear to come in and help with the city clerk stuff, city clerk stuff.
Is Bob Gruber also trained to do some of Riverside's billing?
Not to the full extent that he could be comfortable doing it. That's Carrie in the next two weeks, training myself and Mary. We got kinda behind the eight ball if one person is fully trained in and not training other people, and that's every department in the city, a small town, you're expected to do a lot. You don't have a lot of backups, so I guess going forward, if we can have two or three people trained in on significant things...
Well, I think it would be important to have Bob do that.
Well, part of the deal with Riverside is that the city does the billing, we're paying Riverside.
We're paying Riverside, Riverside's paying us to do billing for them.
So, do we want to bring in somebody outside of our organization to be doing our billing?
Right. Yeah, and the issue with bringing somebody...
Where is the right back?
No, no, the issue with bringing something in even from Sourcewell out of different regions is if they don't understand the BAN system, they have to learn that, as well as our billing system. If we get lucky and find somebody that knows the BAN system, you know, that, that would be a big...
My plan would be too, as soon as Carrie leaves, I feel like we can get more training on Carrie just having her here. As soon as she leaves, I feel like we need to have BAN come in, training myself and Mary.
Absolutely.
And then when we hire the assistant deputy clerk, then it's another training session.
To be honest, you should be setting that up now, so Carrie can be doing some of those other things.
Maybe.
I mean, if that's what she's concentrating on doing for you anyway?
I just feel like my list is too big right now, to set full day on training, but...
That's a big part of your job, though, is that system. And it might not even be option, they might not even be able to do it.
Yeah, I feel like having Carrie there is huge right now.
Yeah, and, and I guess, we, we... So, with bringing somebody in, we gotta make sure they're healthy, not being somebody that you're telling what to do, whatever, you know, that type of thing. And if Pearl can at least answer the door, and Mary can answer the door once. The problem is she's tied up down at the golf course now, because we're gonna need our help there until shutdown there. But after that, going forward, hopefully, we've got her available to help with something too.
Yeah, I guess the big picture, the council, and myself included, needs to look deeply at employee retention. I mean, this is six positions out of the last full, eight, full-time employees that we have are cycling through, and the productivity of our city is very...
Well, that's something we need to sit down, I think, a fall workshop on, something of that nature. See what we do with that, have that out. Okay, anything else on that? Well, Chris Young, Eric.
I have nothing, Dave.
Okay. Anything else, Bob, that you would have?
No, just the stuff, I mean, so Paul's gonna spend three days a week uptown doing public work stuff, so I'm kinda doing some training with him too. So, Zach's gonna be a chill hand hand it down there too, but we'll get by just fine. And then other thing is Mary, I guess we can, we'll manage, so, yeah, just working through that, trying to...
Yeah, Mary's been an extreme asset down at the golf course. Just got another, an individual that was camping down there this weekend, gave us some feedback as to how great they were treated. They called, they were getting up late, they weren't gonna be in time. He hasn't, could have some firewood at, sat outside for them, and we had to deliver it to the campsite, so they're, they're very, very pleased. And they were not happy with how they were treated last year when they were up here, so they were very, very pleased this year. So, we're getting some good feedback down there, and it's, things are going good. We can talk about this later in the budget meetings, but we've a budget, we budgeted very aggressively for some improvements that can come down there for next year, so we can eat those.
There was a four campground this weekend, I just wanted to recite, I mean, it was extremely busy for after-labor days, Thursday, Thursday, January, so that was...
Right. So... Okay. Uh, treasurer's report.
The checkbook that balanced with the statement of August thirty-first was two million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Look for a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Or if there's questions, I'll...
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report. As red.
Motion made by Kyle, seconded by...
I'll second.
Jackie to approve the treasurer's report, all favor indicated by stating aye. Aye. opposed? Carrie unanimously. We don't have any claims, no updates?
Claims are...
Claims are there.
Yeah.
So, we got paid bills.
Somebody wanna grab, planning on just letting them know that we're ready for him?
They pay the bills first.
Oh, okay, let's pay the bills. We're gonna make that motion.
I'll make a motion. Pay the bills to the two of, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Motion's made by Kyle, seconded by...
I'll second it.
Jim, Lynn, to pay the bills, all favor indicated by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Carrie unanimously. Okay. Any other updates, or if not, we're waiting for planning a zoning, I know they've got a list of things coming.
They're coming, you.
Hey. They needed a police escort out.
No, they were just finalizing the last one.
Suddenly, everybody built it.
That time of year. It's been a good year this year for bringing houses, that's good.
So, Bob, are you a notary?
Just signed up today, I actually sent the application.
Awesome, that was my next thing.
Next, and that's, Carrie is full month, so, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
What?
A notary.
So, should have somebody here, of course, there's people at the bank.
I would encourage, I would suggest or encourage Mary to become one as well, so she can be a backup if we need it in the meantime. I think that it would make sense if we're gonna utilize her to be here when she's backup, if somebody comes in and we need something done, or whatever, so...
There's a lot of more career hours to ask for, just...
I think, I agree, I think we need to make sure that we're, what we're doing with her first.
Right.
But you're right, I mean, but it also should be the backup, new person being hired.
Collaborative, yeah, like...
You need a whole lot of gigs, Bob.
We don't.
And even after you get the application back, you have to get a stamp.
Yeah.
Is there a class that you have to take with that?
It's just application, you... Answer four questions.
Oh, man, in California, it's like an eight-dollar class.
Speaking of...
I'm not, they hire you.
People at my office do that.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if he comes around and...
We don't need to do certain classes.
I might hear and show him work with me.
We, we have people at the bank that are, so we can...
Um, well, at the end of certain end of the year, you can do it. And I know like last year, or, I tried to, I couldn't do it.
Oh, what, the Board of Appeals?
Board of Appeals.
Yeah, I did it, I took it, but it's not fresh.
Granted, we won't have an election this year, but for the following year, if there's anything special that Bob has to do, some things have tone lines on them.
Yeah, yeah. The Board of Appeals thing is...
You have to have it done by January...
Get it, I think it's January something.
January thirty-first, you have to have it done.
Usually the county sends out a notice on that.
Were you able to do it?
I took the test, but it's not good until the following year, so I did it...
You might need to let me do it.
You did it after the fact.
I did it after.
And Kyle, I think you and I have to read the law, we should be able to read the law, because it's every two years.
So, I'll take it again.
So, we're really good for two?
I'll take it again, or whatever.
And we should have everybody...
Certification.
Should, should really be, because, and you do learn some things on it, so...
No, it was super helpful, I think.
What process is, and all that, because that's something we go through every day, so...
Carrie and Nicole both have very good calendars, and they just think it's pop up as reminders, so that's...
Will we have access, do we have access to those things, even after they leave, Bob, is that...
They're on city calendars, on Carrie's computer.
It's just on, it's on the computer, not specific to their login or their username.
Make sure you have a password thing for...
I'm very familiar with that.
Planning zoning is here, Jim, step up.
Hi. We have a fence permit for Jeremy Jaeger, down here at the old Doc Science office.
Former RTO building.
Former RTO building. And what he'd like to do is put a fence out to around that parking lot that's behind him. Of course, with everything that's going on, they found out originally that the parking lot is five or six feet onto the neighboring property, so, the cement is, and there's another four or five feet of grass yet. And apparently, there was an agreement in the past with the neighbors there, that it wasn't a big deal. And of course, an issue came up now, this week. And so, he wants to make a fence around there for security purposes. And down the road, he may do auctions. And they may want to store stuff back there, so he wants to try to see fence. And so, he's gonna take out all those trees around that lot. And then the, the back of the lot, next to Capsimer Street, which was the alley there behind, and then the... Summary's A, probably better, will be about fourteen feet from the alley. And so, he said you can make your fence on the edge of the concrete, back all the way around. He's gonna cut off that four or five feet that's on the neighbor's property, and then put the fence right along on that neighbor's property. She did come over and sign the fence permit, and to allow him to put it on the property today. So, that was an issue earlier, but that's been taken care of. And so, he'll go around that, just from the back of the building, to the east, to the end of cement, to the north, and then back along the cement to the building, with the exception of the driveway, which they're gonna put some kind of rolling gate in there, so that they can secure the area. And then there might be a little exception I put in there for around the air conditioner, so they go straight out from the building. The fence will be further away from the road in the building, on the roadside. So, with those, those things, so I put in there, that fence has to be no more than six and a half feet high, and that...
Which is ours, by ordinance.
By ordinance, right. And that it'll just border the existing concrete pad, with the exception of the AC unit. We had some discussion with them, the type of material, they're planning on using fencing panels, metal fencing panels that, you know, together, so it'll be gray like the building, same color roughly as the building, be using six-by-six with post, or a frost line. So, with those exceptions, we thought it would, would work. It's gonna take down all the trees, their concern was seating around that corner, Capsimer Street and the other one. We could have it go back a little further, but you could see plenty, but it'd be a lot better than what it is now, with the trees there, a lot better. And so, there won't be any issues. So, we suggested to approve that one. Uh, unless there's any question with that. Then we have two of them from the ballpark, they want to put a backstop on the north, right? It's the north one.
North, JV field.
The JV field, the north one. And we have, and then they put a fence, a concrete permit also. And they put a backstop up, a concrete permit for a slab, six-foot wide slab around the back of the fence, the backstop. Usually, we, when people put in a building permit to make something, and they're gonna put concrete with it, we don't have them put in a concrete permit that just kinda goes with the building permit. When you build a house, you don't, you know, put a concrete permit for the driveway and the cement of the house, and that. Though we approve both of them anyhow, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Jim and Nancy Gruber want to put in a lot split, but really they want to join two lots. They own, their lot, the house sits on, is only sixty-five feet wide. They own the adjacent lot, which is fifty feet wide. And they're two separate parcels, and he'd just like to put them into one parcel, which makes sense to us. He couldn't build on that one, and then just down the road, so that he just wanted to clean it up. And we obviously have no problem with that, that makes sense at that location. Then we have Midwest Exteriors. They wanna build a house on Cody Court, I should know that street. Might have built a house in Cody Court, and it's a patio home. And the only issue we had with it, he had on, he drew a map. Didn't use our square map that you guys gave me, two yellow pieces of paper. His map here says it's forty feet from the street. That's not appropriate, because, by the way, there is actually fifteen feet, and he's, he's thirty feet from the street. That would be forty-five feet, so I talked to him, and he said, well, the city said that it was ten feet, and they have to go thirty feet, so I put forty feet down. And he said, I can go whatever you want, and I said, well, there's adjacent houses on both sides there. So, the front just has to line up with the houses adjacent to it. He went and measured those, and one is four feet from the back. John Haley's old house is four feet from the back, and his, she built his house to the north. So, he said he'd stake it out halfway between there. And he didn't find the pins again. Probably pins, and we've been through that a couple of times now, and, and he said, well, it's a sixty-five, but a six-foot white house, he's eighteen feet from either side, the neighboring houses are in the center of the lots. Said he just put it in the middle, and have eighteen feet on each side, he obviously would be easily within the ten-foot setbacks. I wouldn't have a major problem with that, I know the area, when I'm making, you can see their houses are sitting, the other ones are sitting in the middle of the lots, they cover the whole lots except for about ten feet on each side. So, he'd have to be all right. However, then he went over there and staked it out this weekend, and I go over there now this morning, and it's not in the middle, it's, so he says he measured from one side over, and so... This weekend, and I go over there now this morning, and it's not in the middle. It's, so he says he measured from one side over, and so. What, I called him again, and he said, well, I just thought you just measured from the neighboring house, and that would make it okay. And I said, well, how do you know that house is right? Because I, we, we can't do that, and he didn't wanna survey it. And so he said, what would be if I moved it to the middle of the lot, like it says on the sheet? I said, we would go with that. So I put on there contingent that there's condition that is in the center of the lot. I guess I should have written it on this sheet here, which I will be in a minute, that's condition that it's, the front is parallel with the street, and, uh, and it's centered on the north and south lines of the lot, and it's only a sixty-five foot wide house. He should have easy, easy for him to do it. Theory, that still leaves him the responsibility to, if he makes an error, that he did not find those pikes. Now, it's, I'm not sure why he doesn't want to go look for them. I think I could come within a foot of that peg, if I go over there. It's not our responsibility to do that. So we approved that on those conditions, that it's the center of the lot. The center of the house centers north and south, and it's aligned with those neighboring two houses. And he's already got the doctor's license, so he wants to get going, right? Then we got, uh, another lot split application, that's what takes the time right now, because it's John and Patty Kurtz, up at the store there. I don't know if you're involved in that at all, but, but, uh, it's to clean up again. It's the, the, the parking lot behind there extends north. Years ago, Thielen Meats built on part of that lot, that Kurtz's furniture is on now. And they did that back, way back when, when Thielen's owned it all, and didn't care where the lot lines were. Well, now that it turns out Kurtz Furniture, that in theory, Thielen Meats is on a fifty-foot wide by eighty-four-foot long strip, east and west, eighty-five, eighty-four feet, fifty feet, north and south. So the first fifty feet south of Thielen Meats store is, the last fifty feet on the south side is, is, is Thielen Meats now, but John Kurtz owns it. And he would just like the lot lines to be changed to the right place, that's all. Our Thielen Meats provides the lot land that's underneath his building, basically, is what's gonna happen. And so obviously, we don't have any problem with that.
Okay. Jim, one question on the fence permit that says seven feet on his application.
It does, and we wrote on there on condition, that one of the conditions is that it's six and a half feet high.
So he's aware of that?
He is aware of that, he is aware of that. The fence ordinance says six and a half feet, posts could go as high as seven. That's what it says on fence. So he wanted seven feet, but he said six and fa, six and a half is fine, so it, it is a condition on there that it's six and a half feet high. And it's, and it's.
Does someone need to check up on the house?
I mean, afterwards.
And before it's built, preferably?
Before they dig.
Before they dig, I, I will probably keep an eye on that one.
Yeah, I, I think if we.
I just think.
We need to reach out to him and say, hey, you need to re-stake it before you dig.
He said he was, he told me, he was this afternoon, that he would re-stake. He staked it out, just like they were ready to dig. And, uh, and he told me that he would, he would re-stake it to the center. And, uh, he's describing the center as the distance between the two adjacent houses, the center of that. He's not describing the center as, but I describe it in there as the center of a lot, so that's his responsibility to get it in the middle. I don't think there's any issue there, but, but, uh, but there is that, there's that caveat, yes. And that's a very good point, that we talked about that a little while today, that down the road, we need to have someone responsible going out there measuring these things. I've done it a couple of times. And as many houses like, permanent buildings, as you all agree, the other stuff can be moved.
I think there should be prior approval before they dig.
Well, that comes back to the building official.
They gotta sign it.
It's not up to the building, in this town, it's not up to.
No, but nothing says we can't change that, as being a.
That's correct. It could be, it's part of the, as part of the inspection fee, would be to be another fee on, on building in this town.
Before you dig or, or.
You see, part of the issue is, is he doesn't know where the, the building inspector doesn't know where the proper lines are either.
He'd have to go out and find them.
He, well, does he have to find it, or does that mean they have to have it surveyed, or someone has to find it?
And, and depending on when he does that inspection, if he does the inspection before he digs, that's another trip out there for him.
That's correct.
He's not gonna do that for nothing.
That's right.
No, but that comes back to the homeowner.
Right, it would have to be charged back.
Charged back to the homeowner.
Yeah, we have to look at how we're doing that process.
It's happened one too many times.
It's happened one too many times, so, yeah, we need to, we need to.
So this one, this one, he's built houses in town before. This is Dale Kloss. In fact, he built the second house now from this one, and I actually think he's purchased a lot across the street from there too. But, uh, he should know the rules.
Have we decided anything on the other one?
We decided anything on the other one. Uh, that's, uh.
Or do we want to approve these first and then get into that?
Yeah.
Submit the motion to approve the building permits, um, as Jim presented.
I'll second.
Building permits and the rezoning permits?
Yes.
Motion's made by Lynn to approve building permits and the rezoning permits, with the stipulations that Jim added to them. All of, uh, second, uh, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Jackie, all favor indicated by stating aye.
Aye.
Poked, carried unanimously.
I, I probably wouldn't call it rezoning, because we're not really rezoning, we're just teaching lots.
Lots, lots, lots splits.
Lot splits.
Lot splits.
In fact, that, we have a lot split ordinance that we put in back five or six years ago that used to be there. We didn't know what to do with these kinds of things. County needs to have something.
Right.
Before they will register it. And we say lot split, but both of these are not splits, they're, we should, we should simply retitle it lot line changes or something. Somebody in the office could come up with some way of wording that, that it goes either way.
Adjustments, that's a good.
Adjustments, yeah, lot line changes, really is all it needs to say, yeah. Not that it makes a difference, we know what, what it means, but.
Okay, thanks, Jim, appreciate it. The other planning and zoning issue we have before us is, uh, a builder, uh, Casella, building the twin home. There's some issues where he is a few feet too close to the property, to the road, uh, as well. We, we found this problem last week. We had issued him a cease and desist, which he cooperated with fully. We met today, uh, a couple of people from planning and zoning, and a couple of people from the council, and we met with the Casellas to, to find out their side of the story and to move forward with this. And I think it was the conclusion of the group, uh, Jackie was with me, Jackie's on the appeals board, and that's why I asked Jackie to join us. It was the proposal, the recommendation of that group to move forward with him and let him continue to build, and not to find him, because there was no intent here. Uh, there was a, a mismeasurement, and we did not do any checking from the time he put the stakes out, like we talked about, we need to do going forward, so. That was kind of the recommendation of, of the group today.
So he thought the lines were different than what they were?
He measured from the curb instead of from the right of way, basically.
And it's very sticky how the right of way.
He, he went on Beacon.
It went on Beacon.
And used the lines that were on Beacon, and Beacon, of course, the lines are, are.
The lines are Beacon.
Unfortunately, right, but they shifted four feet to the east at that location. And so when he measured on Beacon, it looks like the right of way is, instead of being a property line, he calls it, twelve feet in from where, or he was thinking it was six feet west of that, five or six feet west. That's, I think, the kind of the guts of it.
Guts of it, yeah.
When it came down to it.
So. Our options are obviously are to, would be to make him tear it down and start over. We, we could find him. Again, the general consensus was there wasn't any intent here on his part, we don't believe, to, to, to do it that way, and he did cooperate with us when we did ask him to stop, so.
What's that going to do for future properties?
Well, yeah, I think we're in a situation where we handle them individually, but I also think we're also in a situation where we need to do something about
ordinances.
Before they dig or after they dig to approve.
And then also updating the ordinances to make sure that the, the correct lingo is there on what is a right of way, and how far is it in laying out the streets, and giving them papers, like you said, the plaque, giving them that when they're doing their permit, so they have that, and then either they're gonna have to show proof that they find their stakes, or get a survey done. And until that is done, we, we're not gonna, we're not gonna finally submit that, but we have to get together to, you know, we're not gonna finally approve it, but we have to get together to update the ordinances, so for now, it's an assessment, and as they come in situation till we have the time to get that all done.
Yeah, we do, we do need to.
With the consent.
Yeah, we, we, we do need to clarify some things in there, and, um.
Is your question then, more what will this property do to the surrounding properties?
Yeah, and it's, the road he's on, and part of the situ, part of the discussion was, there's no driveway there.
Right.
It's kind of, it's a side road, it's an intersection, so it's a both.
For right now.
For right now, and yes, that road would be extended out, so, uh, the, the next hole that gets built out there will have to be looked at. If they're gonna put in a driveway, there may be a, um, there should be a thirty-foot setback, so in theory, they would still have to go with that zone of thirty feet back. It would be, it would be my opinion of it.
And they're within the five feet, like how we had allowed the lot loads to do that, so they're within the five, well.
Well, I think they're six feet.
They're six feet, but it, I mean, yeah, they're close, and it's within the, you know, we have kind of allowed that, that five-feet leeway, I think, you know, so it was, it was pretty close, so it's one of those things where you're like.
It is tough. Some of these are, these are builders who have built before too.
And he typically does commercial, it's only his second home, so, I mean.
He's not a general contractor.
He's not a general contractor.
Not a general contractor, and he hasn't built in Pierce before, but that all being said, it is still, it's really the responsibility of the homeowner to make sure this is all done.
You can't break the law and tell Eric, you know what, I didn't know, I'm sorry. Yeah, you have to cut me off.
Yeah, but people do it all the time, I bet.
I'm sure they try.
And it's out of the discretion of the police officer to see if they believe.
It's just a sticky road we go down, when we find one person and.
It's a sticky slope.
It's a sticky slope.
Yes, it is.
And I think intent is.
Because I think the other person would argue, he also didn't intentionally do it, it just kinda happened. He's still gonna find it.
I would think that, I would disagree with his.
I would too, but again, it's all in the.
Yeah, so I guess, uh, it's up to the council if we wanna do something different than that, uh, at this time. I'm looking at Kyle and Lynn, because Jackie and I have kind of spoken our opinions on it.
I'm gonna go with the recommendation from the group.
Jim, did, did, did the planning and zoning discusses at all, or you didn't have?
Well, we were kind of getting there.
You got called out, huh?
Yeah, when the, when the chief came, says, get in here.
You listened, right?
No, we did, we did discuss it a period of time, and, and of course, Mary was there.
Yes.
And Donnie's not here today, and, uh, though with the general consensus was that it would be very difficult to have it taken down, we would not, with that, under circumstances that exist at that location at that time, that, that there's fault on all sides to some degree. Although he should have known, because we went through it with him just two months earlier. And, uh, and he did move it back then to what the right of way was, and he seemed to know then. But at the same time, I, I can see how it happened now with him, and, and I think, uh, I think you're right in that it was not intentional, like we have seen.
Yeah.
People have tried, and, and, and that, again, that doesn't, you know, drive you to stop sign, and just because you don't see it, doesn't mean it wasn't there.
And he, he had no reason to.
Yeah, he had no reason to, because actually, the building would have fit on the lot, just easily. All you had to do was move it down six feet, and then it would have been all fine and dandy. But, but he didn't feel he had to, because he thought it was, he was, was okay, and, and if he would have, you know, so I.
And he went above and beyond in other areas that he didn't have to do in, with the building code and the building permitting.
Yeah, that was, that's another issue.
So, I mean, right, he, he did do, at his own expense, costs that were recommended, so I mean, I think that he was doing the right thing, he just messed up.
My vote would be we still should find him. I mean, I understand what you guys are saying, and what, where you're, where you're coming from on it, but the bottom line is, he knew. He knew. Not, again, I can see what can happen if you went on Beacon, but we've talked about this with him before.
And, well, and you pull a beacon, there's all kinds of warnings on there, don't use those lines for property lines, you know. And planning and zoning, we did not talk about any fine issues or anything, just that we wouldn't suggest that it gets torn down.
And I agree, I don't think you should tear it down either.
And one of the issues, like you said, is that end of the building is, doesn't have a driveway on it. We did talk about what you do, dump the road, because that's the first one again, that sets the precedent, so to speak. We make exceptions to precedents, and we have been passed, and, uh, that could be staggered in three feet at a time. Would be my suggestion, if I'm still alive or around or whatever at that time, I would suggest that the next house go back half that distance, and then the, the third one would be at the normal temperature. And so that that one, that one house in between there would be stepped back three feet, you wouldn't hardly notice it at that location, because there'll be nothing in that side of that building, it'll be bare. Most houses have landscaping and other stuff that stick out a little, so it'll look pretty much almost the same, because that's an end of a building, you know. Now, I don't know what he's gonna do for landscaping, or it'll probably be something or two. And it is forty-some feet from the, from the forty.
Forty-two.
Thirty-six, I think it is now. Forty-six from, thirty-six from the curb.
From the curb, yes.
The one he's got is thirty-six feet, and it should be forty-two.
Just, I guess, a sticky slope to go down, because the next person's gonna use the same excuse.
I was wondering, can I talk? I, I just, I couldn't understand a little bit the situation, and I was just, you know, I think people want, can do whatever they want with the properties, but since you do have laws, and say, I'm a neighbor, and I wanna build the same exact thing, and do the same exact thing, and so has done just now, that you're discussing, and you don't, you didn't find this guy, then you, how could you find me then? You know what I mean? It's a discrimination of sorts.
Yeah, the, the issue would be that, and I get your point, the issue would be if, if, if he intentionally did it, or did it, you know, in attempt, that, okay, I'm gonna just move my stakes and do it, I would say, yeah, we'll find you, or in fact, we'll make you tear it down. But in this case, I don't think that was the intent. I think if, uh, if somebody, and, and part of this is, we did, nobody checked that. Granted, it's in the ordinance, not in the ordinances, that somebody does check it, but had somebody gone out before he dug and said, hey, you're not, he wouldn't move those stakes, I'm pretty confident of that, and would have had no reason not to have.
You would have had to.
We, yes, if he'd have said no after that, that would have been a different story, so.
So the fine fee is up to nine hundred dollars. We could fine him a dollar. I mean, the reality is that, I mean, if you're, if you're caught up on the fine, then it should be fine.
I'm not caught up on the fine, I'm caught up on the fact that our ordinance says this.
Right.
The bottom line is, beacon, like Jim said, it tells you.
It tells you.
There's warnings all over the place, and it's on onus, oh, yeah, whether he intentionally did it or not. Who's to say the next guy's gonna say, you know what, I didn't know it either, I'm sorry. Who's to say the next guy's going to say, you know what, I didn't know it either, I'm sorry. That's what I'm getting caught up on. It's not the, it's not the fine.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, the next guy, we're hoping to not have this happen because we're putting steps in place now because we're learning, right? So, I mean, I don't.
Doesn't have an excuse though.
One of the things that gets me, but it's. I wasn't here in the past, I know there's some bad blood there, but.
Well, it's not bad blood, it's a matter of, it's following what's there. So these things don't happen. But I'm one vote.
Do, do we have a motion either way?
I'd make the motion to follow the ordinance or the policy, whatever that fine may be. I, I don't agree we should tear, he should have to tear it down or restart over.
The, the policy says that we could find him up to $900 per day of him being in violation. Technically, he stopped the day we informed him. And he hasn't done anything since.
No, I'd say the $900 then.
So technically, he's not in violation for more than a day.
And that's what we followed for the last person, correct?
Yeah.
And that could have been.
In my opinion, yes, we did. And in my opinion, that was a little bit different situation because he willingly and knowingly did it.
But we need to take that piece out.
Yeah, I, I, I know where you're coming from on that. I don't disagree with that.
What are your thoughts, Kyle?
Motion, okay, would you want to put a dollar alone in?
I said the $900 because of he ceased.
Motion's made by Lynn to charge the builder and homeowner there, Casella's $900 fine for the violation. Seconded. No second. Do we have a motion to not do anything then? Do we have a different motion? Motion failed on block of the second. Do we have a separate motion?
I think we should make a motion to allow him to continue building without finding him.
Motion's been made by Jackie to allow him to continue building without a fine.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kyle. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Poked.
No.
The vote carried three, two, one. See, I can do my math. Any other business that we need to discuss? Okay, I will look for somebody to fill in for Donnie.
My question.
Motion's been made by Lynn to adjourn and seconded by.
I'll second.
Jackie, all in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Poked. Thank you for coming, everyone.